A quorum being present, the special town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted pursuant to the Mass General laws and the Granby bylaws?
Yes, they have.
Please rise as Select Board Chairman, Mr. Joyce, leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who are new to town meeting, up front we have sitting our Finance Committee, our Select Board, our Town Administrator, Town Council, and Town Clerk. If you are a non-resident or non-voter, please sit in the designated areas. If you would like to discuss a motion as presented, please raise your hand and wait for me to acknowledge you. When the microphone comes to you, please state your name and address before you comment. If you... No, sorry. Please limit yourself to one question unless you ask me if you can follow up with a question, otherwise we will give the microphone to somebody else. And then lastly, please do not direct a comment to a particular person at town meeting. Direct your questions to me, and I will direct them to the appropriate person. The moderator will now recognize Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 1.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's always greatly appreciated when we get people to come out for the town meeting. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume 3, Chapter 21, zoning bylaws, Sections 5, Special Use Regulations and Performance Standards, Section 5.99- Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Insulations, by amending Section 5.99.1 for the purpose of renumbering, adding special permit granting and site plan review authority, and adding new subsections C, Term of Permit, and D, Outside Consultant Review, as detailed in the Planning Board's report to the town meeting on October 4, 2019.
Thank you. Can I have a second? So now I will open the floor up for discussion. Do you want to say something about your...
This is just, we're just adding in a couple areas. As you see on the handout, letters C and letter D are just being added in just regards to some of the things that came up at our meeting, our hearing for the town to have some input. So, just quickly, the initial term, which is 5.99.1(c), the initial term of any special permit for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations will be 20 years, such other time determined by the Planning Board. The permit may be extended for two five-year terms upon inspection of said facility. Any further extension shall require a new application. And currently what it is, it's just set at a 20-year term. There's no extension or anything to that point. Also, 5.99.1(c), for the purpose of this law, the Planning Board engaged with an outside consultant, an applicant expense for Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53g, which basically means that we can, the Planning Board can charge an applicant for any outside consultant that we do to bring more information to the Board. As you know, the Planning Board is a part-time board of volunteers, so at times we'll reach out to people that have special talent, if you will, with this information that brings it forward to us to help us out with our decisions.
Thank you. Jay?
I'm not doing so good, as you can see. I probably should be home in bed, but I'm here, okay? So you gotta cut me some slack. Madam Moderator, I'd like to amend the Article 5.99.1(a).
Saying what?
Okay, what I'd like it to say, in your handout, it starts with "Site Plan Review for Authority." I would like to add "special permit" AND in front of "Site Plan Authority." The reason for that...
Wait, wait, we had to get a second first.
Oh, okay.
But you have another...
Yeah, I was gonna do one at a time.
Nope, do them together.
She's gonna kill me yet. Okay, on 5.99.1.e., a large-scale ground-mounted solar installation of 250 kW or larger mounted on top of a canopy that is constructed over a parking lot is allowed as of right with Site Plan approval by the Planning Board.
Can I have a second? So in order to discuss these amendments, I need a motion to stop discussion on the main motion. And a second? So now I'll open the floor up to discussion regarding the two changes to 5.99.1, which again, Jay would like at 5.99.1(a), the addition of "special permit" and "Site Plan The second part of the amendment is the addition of a 5.99.1e, a large-scale ground-mounted solar installation of a 250 kW or larger mounted on top of a canopy that is constructed over a parking lot is allowed as of right with Site Plan approval by the Planning Board. You want to explain?
If you had, oh, full zoning bylaws, you would have access to the Table 3, which under bylaw 3.5.20, it states under RSI and I2 that a special permit and Site Plan approval is required by the Planning Board. Now, we've had this similar problem with the Bow and Gun Club. If you do not state it in writing what's in the table, the writing takes precedent over the table. So what I'm asking you to do is so our Planning Board can do a special permit without being challenged by some attorney to add the words "Site, Plan, a special permit," AND in front of it. That's the reason for it.
Any questions on that part of the amendment? What did Jay just say? Jay, can you explain the second part of the amendment that you're requesting?
I just got my card. Glenn knows this as well as I do, but the 5.99.1e, we are a green community, as probably a lot of you know. But when the green community gives us additional requirements on top of Mass D O E R, if we want to remain a green community and be eligible for the quarter million dollars every year in grants, we have to comply with their request. They have three requests: a renewable energy research and development facility of 5,000 square feet or more, or you could have a renewable energy manufacturing facility of 50,000 square feet or more, or you could have a standalone 250 kW large-scale ground-mounted solar. And the reason we're putting this one on a canopy is we're following basically what Belcher Town did. We want the Planning Board to have special permit and Site Plan approval, all with everything mounted actually on the ground. By putting it exclusively on a canopy as a right, we can apply for the quarter million dollars. And if you want to know, to do a 250 kW ground-mounted unit, it takes about 40,000 square feet. The only place I know in Granby that's got a 40,000-square-foot parking lot is right here. So this will give us a chance to apply for the grant, and if things want to be changed for the next year, they can. We have to have this done before 1 December, or we cannot meet our requirements.
Any questions or further discussion on the amendments? Mr. Nally?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Steve Nally, 31 Pleasant Street. Madam Moderator, would you ask the Chair of the Planning Board as to whether they support these amendments or not? And if not, why not?
Glenn, can you speak to that?
Steve, as the Chair of the Planning Board, we do support this. The first one is more of a clerical error, so it's gotta be added in, so the actual chart matches our definitions and our bylaws. And secondly, from my understanding and speaking with Jay as being the Chair of the Energy Committee, the second one he has added here makes us qualify as a green community, and then we can qualify for grants under that Act. So yes, we do support it.
Any further questions? Right-hand front.
Wendell Love, 21 Taylor. I don't know if this question fits under this one or not. I had a question about the fencing.
That will be a different article. Go ahead and stand up.
Sheamus Connolly, 21 Ferry Hill Road, Granby, Mass. My question is, if we were to put up this solar, the solar thing you were discussing, would it bring economic stability to the town?
So Sheamus, right now we're talking about the amendments being added to the motion, so the question has to pertain to the amendments that are being discussed, which is the special permit and the canopy.
I think it would go great.
Thank you. So in order for the amendments to pass, they must pass by a majority. Once they're passed, they will go on to the main motion, and we will discuss the main motion as amended. If they don't pass, we will simply go back to the motion as presented. So all those in favor of adding the amendments to the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? So the amendments pass by a majority. So now I will open the floor up for any discussion or questions now on the motion as amended. Seeing that there isn't any, we will vote on the motion as amended. In order for it to pass, it must pass by a 2/3 majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a 2/3 majority. The moderator will now ask Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 2.
Madam Moderator, for Article 2, I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume 3, Chapter 21, zoning bylaws, Section 5, Special Use Regulations and Performance Standards for Section 5.99- Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installation, by amending subsection 5.99.3, general sighting standards, by removing inapplicable zoning district for consistency, and adding distance requirement standards, and adding language to reference another section in the bylaw, as detailed in the Planning Board's report town meeting for October 4, 2019.
Second, any discussion?
And again, with the handouts that you were given, it will say the Planning Board seeks to increase distance between solar development and abutting properties and the roadway. Prior to proposed amendment, the recent moratorium on solar development applications had addressed to demonstrate existing setbacks as stated in Section 3.2, Density Regulations, a residential single-family district, RS, for front being 40, side 15, rear 20, and industrial 1 and industrial 2 districts from front 40, side 30, and rear 20. So those are the current regulations in our current bylaws. The Planning Board has proposed that all future solar development in those zones will require 100-foot distance from the property line, 50-foot distance from side and rear property lines.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read them all now?
Are they gonna be up there?
I can put them up there.
So as you read them, why don't you put them up there? So you can sit down here.
Just to explain to you what we've done here to try and make it easy on everybody. If it's in green, we're looking to it either as an addition. If it's in yellow, we're asking to remove it. So I'll read it as... You want me to read the whole thing or just the highlighted?
Just read your amendments.
Okay, the amendment to 5.99.3.a.1, we're amending that to 40,000 square feet and larger, or 250 kW and larger, but not more than 15 acres. 5.99.3.a.2 is a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation to not be allowed on important agriculture farmland, as defined in the U.S. Department of Agriculture, as those soils found to be important farmlands pursuant to 7 CFR and 657.5. That article includes prime lands, unique farmlands, and additional land of state importance. On 5.99.3b, we're asking...
Jay, just a second. You have a copy of this in your handouts, the proposed amendments that he's reading on the screen, so you can follow along if that's easier for you. Go ahead, Jay.
Okay. I can switch to that one if you want me to, and you want me to switch to that handout one?
No, continue.
Okay. You see, on 5.99.3b, we're asking that to be changed, the setbacks to be as follows: a minimum of 200 feet from the road, a minimum of 40 feet of frontage, and a minimum of 50 feet on the sides and the back. Then we would skip down to 5.99.3d, which is no more than 8% slope on the entire project. This includes the solar panels, shading area, setbacks, et cetera. Then we go on to 5.99.3.e. for screening. 5.99.3.e.1, screening shall be a minimum of 50 feet wide to the height of the solar installation, screening on all sides, including public ways, which are roads or streets. Setback area may be used for screening. 5.99.3.e.2, fences shall be equal to the top of the highest solar device that may be viewed surrounding the entire solar installation from a butter's and/or public way. 5.99.3.e.3, planting shall use a minimum of a 4-foot height for season foliage trees and/or a minimum of 5-foot deer-resistant arborvitae. 5.99.3.e.4, mature height after a minimum of 5 years shall be a height of the fence. 5.99.3.e.5, trees shall be planted in a staggered formation triangular for the best screening 5.99.3.e.6, any tree with a minimum of 10-inch diameter at a 4-foot height that is cut to install a large-scale ground-mounted solar installation, including the areas to prevent the shading of the systems of more than 20%, shall be replaced to maintain the greenhouse gas, GHG, reduction process. 5.99.3.e.7, replacement trees/auravites may be added to natural vegetation in the 50-foot setback areas to enhance screening. Planting shall use a minimum of a 4-foot height for season foliage trees and a minimum of 5-foot deer-resistant arborvitae, mature height after a minimum of 5 years shall be the height of the fence. 5.99.3.f., mitigation for loss of forest habitat within the installation. If the forest land is proposed to be converted to a large-scale ground-mounted solar installation, the plan should allow for migration measures that create a wildflower meadow habitat within the immediate surrounding solar installation, and a successional forest habitat in the surrounding areas managed to prevent shading until such time as the installation is decommissioned. And 5.99.3.g., mitigation of disruption of existing trail networks. If existing trail networks or woods, roads, are disrupted by the location of the large-scale ground-mounted solar installations, the plan shall show alternative trail alignments to be constructed by the applicant. Good, that's it.
Can I have a second? Can I have a motion to stop debate on the main article? And I will now open the floor up to discussion to these extensive amendments. However, in order to make it easy, because they're so extensive, what I would like to do is talk about one subsection at a time that has been amended. So now I will open the floor to questions regarding the amendments to 5.99.3.a.1, which is the addition of 40,000 square feet and larger, of a 250 kW and larger, but no larger than 15 acres. And then the addition of A2, right underneath it, which talks about large-scale ground-mounted solar installations. So are there any questions on those two amendments? Or Jay, would you like to explain anything before anybody asks questions?
The reason we put in these things is if you remember on the last article, we put in the canopy at 250 kW. We want to be consistent and not difference between the two. We just voted and passed that one. And the second part is really kind of out of our control. That's what the state and the federal government are mandating for the U.S. Department of Agriculture. So that's about it on those two. Any questions?
Are there any questions on the floor about those two amendments? In the back, Mr. Randall?
Thank you, George Randall, 52 Taylor. So am I correct in understanding that if somebody wanted to put in a solar farm, if you will, of 249 kW, that these two sections would not apply? Am I correct in that? Thank you, Jay.
George, you're absolutely correct. Anything under 250 kW is by right. You're allowed to do it.
Go ahead, right there.
Bob Sheehan Jr., 144 Taylor Street, member of the Planning Board. Regarding the building on prime farmland, we have a lot, we have several large property-owner farmland people, farmers, and so we're gonna restrict them from doing something with their property and not reeking the benefits of possibly putting up a solar farm. And I want to go a little bit further with this. Why should we be delegating to these farmers of the prime farmland? Let the U.S. Department of Agriculture take care of that and tell them what they can and can't do. I think we should be helping the farmers if they so chose.
If you have an answer. Can you come up here, Jay, and answer? One minute. You want to come up the microphone?
Actually, the question for farmland, the state is making it better for the farmers. They want the farmers to continue growing food, and they want to have renewable energy at the same time. Currently, for a farmer that wants to put a large-scale ground-mounted solar solely on his property, a farmer pays $4.01 something per thousand, whereas a natural, one of us residents paid $19.36 per thousand on our valuation. What's coming out for the solar, for the farmers, is called do-use. You see the pictures with the vegetables with the solar farms? If the farmer, and I'll use Dickinson's farm as an example, they had to give up their Chapter 61 rights to put in a large-scale ground-mounted solar. In the new round here, the solar, I mean, the farmer doesn't have to give up his rights. He can stay at his 25%. That's all he pays on the taxes. He does not have to go to full rate if he puts up solar and vegetables combined. And the study here, and there's more to read if you wanted to, this is a UMass thing, and this is coming from the state. They are saying there are some vegetables, like broccoli, cauliflower, and other ones written in this whole thing here, and I'm not a farmer. With the shade from the solar, they are decreasing the temperature by 15 to 17 degrees, and they are actually growing more crops with this than they are in straight sunlight. And that's coming from the state. It's not coming from me.
Steve Nally, 31 Pleasant Street. I think it's appropriate, the same question I asked... I think it's appropriate, the same question I asked before, that the planning board commented on each of these sections.
Okay.
Steve, as noted in the first section, and as actually noted by Mr. Randall when he asked the question, that anything under two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatts can be placed anywhere by right in town. So, you know, when we, we look at a forty thousand square foot or larger, it's understandable, but as technology keeps on moving forward, it takes less and less acreage to do certain things like that. So, you know, and I think from the planning board's point of view, this, you know, looking at this and as it came up, I, I can't see that we do support the first part, the forty thousand square feet. With that said, the second part, I know Mr. Sheehan in the back had spoke to that as a member of the planning board, and this was discussed, you know, during, at the planning board meetings for some time. And I want to remind people, too, that our amendments that we are making, our bylaws are living and breathing. So it means that we can be changed, you know, when we feel the need to change them to best fit the town. So if something doesn't seem right this time, six months from now, a year from now, two years from now, we can look at changing things, just because as time goes on, our town changes and we change with different things. You, you go back, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, solar panels weren't even a thought process when it came to putting them in our area. So, you know, I, and I want to respect what, what Bob Sheehan said in the back, too, is, you know, supporting our, our farmers and with land. There's not many farmers nowadays that actually grow different things in town. You see a lot of old farms that are no longer farmed, if you will, nowadays. So it's kind of looking at those homeowners and property owners and looking at a way that we can also assist them, too. Again, we're one town together, but we got to look at, at both sides, how we can help out both sides.
I just want to say this. A lot of these bylaws that we're looking at are to protect you people, our town residents. You have the opportunity at any time as a town resident to go before the zoning board of appeals and have its changed. The majority of these bylaws that you're looking at is for people coming outside, like solar developers, saying this is a prime spot to hit. Just for an example, I'm an alternate commissioner in the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. There are thirty-four cities and towns in the Pioneer Valley. Currently, seven of them have active lawsuits against them because they don't have bylaws like we're trying to put in tonight, because the townspeople spoke up and says, I don't want this so close, I don't want this there, I don't want that there. So that's why we're trying to get specific with these bylaws, to keep these people from ruining Granby. We want Granby to be a beautiful country atmosphere. We want the landowners to continue making as much money as they can. And one thing to understand about these solar farms, the town gets zero revenue for them. We have to support the police, the fire, the highway department. We have to, with our taxes, we have to fund all these services. And since these units are tax-exempt, we don't get a penny for the solar installation itself. So as I said before, they are an asset as far as the energy and greenhouse gases and stuff like that, but as far as money for us, they're actually, for the town, a liability.
Thank you.
Seamus Connolly, twenty-one Fariah Road, Granby, Mass. I agree with the, I agree with the members one hundred percent on this. And, and, you know, I'm very interested in solar, and I think that, you know, if you, if, let's say, I decide I want to get a solar farm, like where I work at ninety-five Taylor Street. How, uh, God, I'm stalling, I'm sorry.
Seamus, we can come back to you.
Yeah, please do. I'm sorry.
Back here, please. Not you yet, I'll do you next.
Bob Sheehan, Jr., one forty-four Taylor Street. This project at UMass where farmers can grow whatever it was, cauliflower and that kind of stuff, I don't see any large solar developer allowing a farmer to go in the solar array with cultivation equipment and run the risk of damaging the solar panels. I also would, Madam Moderator, I would also like to know from Mr. Joyce, what makes the town think that they can benefit off of private property? The, if, if the property owner wants to put up the solar farms, we may not, we collectively, the town, may not get any money back. However, what they're doing is they're leasing their property to the solar developers so that they can afford maybe taxes or afford more for themselves. The, and also, there are no services that are required, typical services for a solar array. What would stop the farmer from just saying, to heck with it, I'm going to put it, put in a subdivision? Now, we have maintenance of road, we have children in school, increase in traffic, and probably not very much tax revenue. Thank you.
Right here, the woman, the microphone's coming to you. Stand up, please, so she can see you. Yeah. Uh, we're not there yet. We're not there yet, okay. Go ahead, right here, stand up so she can see you, please.
Rich DeMaraki, Bachelor Street. I agree with Jay one hundred percent. The comment was made that if a solar project isn't put in, a subdivision might be built. Granby will collect real estate taxes from a subdivision. They will collect zero from a solar project. So I would agree with what Jay has recommended one hundred percent.
In the, in the back, we have a member that is not a town member that's been asking to speak. He is a business owner in town, so in order to allow him to speak, I do need a motion. And I need the majority of town meeting to allow him to speak, so please raise your cards. Thank you very much. So go ahead.
Thank you all for being so kind to vote to allow me to speak. My name is Steve Griffin. I'm the head of school at the McDuffie School in the east end of town. We are a taxpayer, but corporations are not people, so I'm very happy that you've allowed me to, to speak. Just a few comments about this particular amendment, the question of the limit of fifteen acres on the size. So just to clarify, if I were to have a parcel larger than fifteen acres in order to use it for solar, I would need to subdivide said parcel. So it says not more than fifteen acres, if you could just clarify, and I might have a follow-up statement if possible.
All right. You want to clarify?
I do, I just want to, please. I just want to reference one thing that the, that came up about the solar farm and a subdivision. And the statement that was made, that the town doesn't receive any tax money from the, from a solar farm. That is untrue. That is completely false and untrue. The town does receive money, they receive the tax money from the property. And most of your farmland now is in Chapter sixty-one, which is protected, and they pay, as Jay spoke earlier, pays a less amount. For someone to lease their property or sell their property, where it's no longer going to be used as farmland, it comes out of Chapter sixty-one. And reference that the back pay three years of taxes, to, five years of taxes to the town, and after that, they're taxed at a different rate. So that the town does obtain additional funds from when that, that does happen.
Who wants to answer Steve's question?
Just to clarify what Glenn said, he is right about the property, the land. When I said they get no money from the solar installation, that is also a true statement for the simple reason, the installation is like a building. Okay? We get, we're not allowed to tax any structure of the solar installation at all, like you would a house or a business. The property, you got to separate the land from the actual structure. As Glenn said, if you're in sixty-one, you get taxed at like four dollars and eighty cents per thousand assessed. If you're a regular resident, you get assessed at nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents per thousand. But for the land, you do get money. For the structure itself, you do not. And to answer to Steve's question in the back, all you have to do, the reason we put in fifteen acres to start with, a solar developer doesn't make any money until they get thirteen acres or more. We put in fifteen acres to start with. Any property owner here can go to the zoning board of appeals and get a variance to go as large as they so desire. But to tell the people up front coming in that it's going to be looked at for the best interests of the town is that's why you go to the zoning board of appeals.
Go ahead and follow up.
And just as a follow-up point, point on this particular comment being made, I just want to urge the town of Granby to consider working with a public utility to build a substation, improving the electrical grid, being part of the energy solution, and making money by charging solar, solar field owners to provide electricity to that substation. Thanks.
Bob Sheehan, Jr., one forty-four Taylor Street. I hear a lot of beating of the chest that we're a green community, we're a green community. But now all of a sudden, we're trying to put restrictions on solar arrays that may be impossible to meet. So where, where are we falling here? Are we a green community? Are we going to restrict these large solar arrays? Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Comment over here. Can you stand, please, so she sees you? Thank you.
Daphne Caminitis, East Street in Granby. I just want a clarification that you said that you, Granby does receive taxes from the land that the solar's on. So how does that land on East Street, that is a solar farm that was bought by Westover and which is a federal government that doesn't pay taxes and lease that land out to the solar field? Where's that tax revenue? And we have lost a lot of tax revenue of all the homes Westover bought. So how is that brought up?
What the lady is saying, if there's federal land in any municipality in the state of Massachusetts, the federal government does not pay taxes to the state of Massachusetts.
Land, and we don't receive that, any tax revenue from that? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Because it's federal land. Because it is, it's, it is federal land, and until recently, maybe six, seven months ago, the town was receiving electricity in lieu of taxes from that, that area. But since it has changed through the government, saying that they are considered to be tax-exempt because they're considered utility now, that has, that has changed things. But also, I want to go back one, two, to remember that when a solar farm is being built, there is a foundation for each particular solar panel that's put in. And as years have gone on, yes, that's gotten smaller and smaller as far as square footage and, and cement, but each particular item that's put in the ground, that is measured and based on square footage, that can be taxed. And as I said, unfortunately, over the years, with technology, it's been getting smaller and smaller for the footing. But again, those are areas that is, may seem minimal, but it is tax revenue that's coming into the town.
So I see no more hands up. So in order to uncomplicate things, we're going to simply vote on the amendments to section five point nine nine point three A. So the two amendments we just talked about, the two changes have to be passed by a majority in order to be attached to the motion. So all those in favor of the amendments as presented under five point nine nine point three point A point one, and the addition of five point nine nine point three point A point two, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The amendments passed by a majority. I will now open the floor up for discussion to the removal of the distance requirements under three point B with the addition of the new setbacks. So I now open the floor to just three point B. And before Mr. Nally asks, I will ask the planning board to make their recommendation.
So Steve, just, just based on that, through several different meetings with the, the planning board, the planning board submitted what they feel is the correct, the numbers as far as minimums from town, from property, town property, or, excuse me, private property lines. So I, I can tell you, people saw many of the meetings, it was definitely a discussion that went back and forth between the, the board members as far as the distance requirement. There was a lot of different thoughts for each, each member on what they thought to be correct. So what was settled on and voted on is what you see here tonight.
It's coming.
Leanne Weasel, seventy-four Kendall Street. Madam Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to the setbacks. Solar field will be a minimum of two hundred feet from a residence on all sides.
I'm sorry, so you want to make an amendment to the amendment which says?
A solar field or solar farm will be two hundred feet from a residence on all sides.
So you want to add something to this amendment?
Yes.
First of all, I need it in writing, so you need to write what you want down. So Leanne, the issue we're having with the amendment as drafted is we have over 12 types of residences in Granby as defined in our bylaws. So your amendment as drafted is overbroad and doesn't specify which residences you want to be included at a minimum of 200 feet. Can you, can you give them the mic, please?
Jim Weasel, 74 Kendall Street. Would it make a difference if it said dwelling instead of residence, 200 feet from a dwelling?
No, because there's multifamily dwellings, single-family dwellings.
It's still a dwelling.
I couldn't hear you.
It's still a dwelling. I mean, the, the issue is here is that a, a house can be set as close to a property line as 15 feet. And you add the 15 feet and 50 feet, it's not enough distance between a house and the solar field. So rather than, because everybody's up in arms over the 50 or 100-foot setback from a property line, if you make it from the dwelling, that way there would be a buffer for the resident that, that is close to his property line. I'm not sure what you were requesting there. Or is that just a comment?
Just a comment. But if it needs to be a motion, I would make that, make that motion to postpone this article indefinitely and send back to committee.
Moving the question is not debatable. But you need a two-thirds vote, so... So, I have a request to move the question, which means we stop debate on the amendments completely and then go back to the main motion. Do I have a second? So, in order to move the question, which again means to stop debate on all these amendments, I need a two-thirds majority that agrees I want to stop debate on the amendments and discuss the motion. And then we go back to the original motion and discuss the motion as presented by the planning board. So, all those in favor of stopping discussion on the amendments, please raise your cards. Can I have the counters come out, please? Please keep your cards high so they can count. Thank you. All those against moving the question, please raise your hand. Keep it up, please. Okay, thank you. So, we have forty yays to thirty-four nays, which means we do not have the two-thirds necessary to move the question. So, the floor is still open to discuss the amendment, the First Amendment presented by Jay. So...
I'll need to explain.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is it here, the two hundred by two hundred. This is the one we're doing, right?
Yep.
Okay, what we're attempting to do is the planning board proposed a hundred-foot setback from the road. We're asking that to be increased to two hundred feet. In our town and in our bylaws, it says to have a house out of parcel, excuse me, out of parcel, out of a lot of land, okay? You've got to have forty thousand square feet. If you take the minimum frontage allowed by our current bylaws, which is a hundred and fifty feet, you have to have two hundred and sixty-seven feet setback to have forty thousand square feet. Two sixty-seven times a hundred and fifty, I think it'll give you four thousand and fifty feet. What we're asking to do is not the full two hundred and sixty-seven. We're saying, trying to mediate between the landowners, the residents, and make Granby a nice place to live. Just do two hundred-foot setback. And then to meet the forty thousand square feet property requirement, you'd have to increase your frontage by fifty feet to two hundred. So, instead of going miles and miles back to build a home, you go two hundred feet from the street. And then, because of the forty thousand square foot, forty thousand square foot requirement to build a dwelling, you have to increase your frontage, which is the value of your land, the most valuable on the road, from a hundred and fifty to two hundred. That's the purpose of the amendment that I have. So, we can build homes in front of the solar farms so the town can get some revenue. Because if you multiply one hundred, what the planning board has recommend, times their fifteen, hundred and fifty front, it's only fifteen thousand square feet, you can't build a house. If you go to Board of Health, you do not meet the requirements between sewer and well. That's why we say the hundred-foot has to be increased to a minimum of two hundred foot. Does that make any sense to anybody?
Mr. Randall?
George Randall, fifty-two, Taylor. When I went to the hearing or public meeting that you had last week, I'm as confused tonight as I was then. I think that if you want to pass this amendment, that you'd be very remiss in letting it pass. I'm of the opinion that this entire article should be recalled for tonight and carried over to another date and time where additional research can be done, if you will, and come back with a better proposal than what we have. Gosh, I lose my thought here. I'm of the opinion that this article doesn't need to pass tonight or fail tonight either. I just think it needs to go back to committee and come back to the town with a whole lot better information that people can understand. I'm really surprised that there aren't any more questions being asked on the articles themselves or of the proposed amendments. I'll admit that I don't have all the answers and that I don't understand it all, and I can't be the only one.
So, George, are you requesting a motion to postpone indefinitely? To postpone indefinitely? I'm not sure what you were requesting there. Or is that just a comment?
Just a comment. But if it needs to be a motion, I would make that, make that motion to postpone this article indefinitely, if you will, or postpone it until a later date and time.
Well, you can postpone to a later date because once we dissolve the meeting, everything dissolves.
Okay.
So, it would have to be indefinitely.
Just quickly, and I'll make this brief, just so everybody remembers too, if something is voted on tonight, you know, whether it passes or doesn't pass, as I started off talking about our bylaws, they're a living, breathing document. So, just because something doesn't happen tonight does not mean three months, six months, a year from now, two months from now, that whatever committee needs to look at this can look at it again and develop something. You know, this committee, speaking for the planning board, we took time and effort to look at this. We had a public hearing for residents to show up. We took input. We, you know, we got a lot of different information, and we presented what we feel to be the best for the town at that time. The town may agree or may not agree, but I do tell you that we can, this could be changed down the road too. And I want people to remember that. Just means if something's voted on tonight and it passes or doesn't pass, doesn't mean it's end of all. It's, which is something that can be brought up again, addressed again, and brought to the town floor again.
Go ahead.
Just to let you know and remind you, the moratorium ends thirty January of 2020. If you don't decide something tonight, if you want to table this or whatever, you're going to lose the protection of the moratorium. If you lose the protection of the moratorium, then if anybody puts in what's called an A&R, which is approval not required, like they have in numerous other communities, once the planning board approves that A&R, they get our current bylaws for three years. None of this, like I explained before in Belchertown, they won't have their solo bylaws, in fact, for eight years. Because if somebody goes before the planning board with a subdivision, and they get it approved by the planning board, they get the protection of the current bylaws from the day the planning board approved it for the next eight years. So, not by moving, not going forth and deciding these things tonight, because our deadline to get it sent to the Attorney General is one November. Today is twenty-eight October. That's three days. So, we have to decide something if you want the protection that the moratorium gave you. If you don't decide something, then you get no protection. You come like all the other communities. They come into town, and you could either end up in court trying to fight them or let them do what they want. Because currently, your bylaws lets them do what they want. I mean, people, I watched on Facebook, they were upset about the Dollar General store. The planning board had no reason to deny them because they met your bylaws. Under the current thing is any solar developer comes in, can do what they want because they would meet your current bylaws. That's why we need these new ones to put in place if you want any protection.
All right. Mr. Roser?
Madam Moderator, can we just move the question on the amendment right now? And move on with the amendment if it passes? Could we just move the question on the amendment right now, up or down? If it passes, we move on? If it, and go back to the original article if it doesn't?
So, do you want to move the question regarding the amendment to five point nine nine point three B? Or the whole thing, all the amendments? We'll have to open, I have to open the floor then to questions to the rest of the amendment, not just what we've been talking about. So, if you want to move it just specifically for this portion, I certainly will entertain that. Well, then, I, but we haven't opened the floor to questions for the rest of the amendment. So, if you would like, if you would like me to open the floor for the rest of the amendment, I will certainly do that, but I think it'll confuse things even more. So, so, do you want me to move the question on B? What, do I have a second? In order to vote on the amendment, B, I need a two-thirds majority to move the question. So, all those in favor to just take the vote, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Okay, so, we will move the question and we will vote, we will stop debate now on five point nine nine point three B and vote for Jay's amendment, which is a deletion of the distance requirements and the addition of the three bullets of setbacks. In order for the amendment to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion, the amendment passes by a majority. So, we will now discuss five point nine nine point three D, which is an eight percent of...
Just quickly, and I'll make this brief, just so everybody remembers too. If something is voted on tonight, you know, whether it passes or doesn't pass, as I started off talking about our bylaws, they're a living, breathing document. So just because something doesn't happen tonight does not mean three months, six months, a year from now, two months from now, that whatever committee needs to look at this can look at it again and develop something. You know, speaking for the planning board, we took time and effort to look at this. We had a public hearing for residents to show up. We took input. We, you know, we got a lot of different information, and we presented what we feel to be the best for the town at that time. The town may agree or may not agree, but I do tell you that we can, this could be changed down the road too. I want people to remember that. Just means if something's voted on tonight and it passes or doesn't pass, doesn't mean it's end of all. It's something that can be brought up again, addressed again, and brought to the town floor again.
Just to let you know and remind you, the moratorium ends 30 January of 2020. If you don't decide something tonight, if you want to table this or whatever, you're going to lose the protection of the moratorium. If you lose the protection of the moratorium, then if anybody puts in what's called an A&R, which is approval not required, like they have in numerous other communities, once the planning board approves that A&R, they get our current bylaws for three years. None of this, like I explained before, in Belchertown, they won't have their solo bylaws, in fact, for eight years. Because if somebody goes before the planning board with a subdivision, and they get it approved by the planning board, they get the protection of the current bylaws from the day the planning board approved it for the next eight years. So not by moving, not going forth and deciding these things tonight, because our deadline to get it sent to the Attorney General is 1 November. Today is 28 October. That's three days. So we have to decide something if you want the protection that the moratorium gave you. If you don't decide something, then you get no protection. You come, like all the other communities, they come into town, and you could either end up in court trying to fight them, or let them do what they want. Because currently, your bylaws lets them do what they want. I mean, people, I watched on Facebook, they were upset about the Dollar General store. The planning headboard had no reason to deny them, because they met your bylaws. Under the current thing is, any solar developer comes in, can do what they want, because they would meet your current bylaws. That's why we need these new ones to put in place if you want any protection.
All right. Mr. DeRozier?
Can we just move the question on the amendment right now? And move on with the amendment? If it passes, we move on?
Could we just move the question on the amendment right now, up or down? If it passes, we move on? If it, and go back to the original article if it doesn't?
So do you want to move the question regarding the amendment to 5.99.3? B? Or? The whole thing, all the amendments? We'll have to open the floor then to questions to the rest of the amendment, not just what we've been talking about. So if you want to move it just specifically for this portion, I certainly will entertain that. Well, then, but we haven't opened the floor to questions for the rest of the amendment. So if you would like me to open the floor for the rest of the amendment, I will certainly do that, but I think it'll confuse things even more. So, so do you want me to move the question on B? Do I have a second? In order to vote on the amendment, B, I need a two-thirds majority to move the question. So all those in favor to just take the vote, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Okay, so we will move the question and we will vote, we will stop debate now on 5.99.3B and vote for Jay's amendment, which is a deletion of the distance requirements and the addition of the three bullets of setbacks. In order for the amendment to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion, the amendment passes by a majority. So we will now discuss 5.99.3D, which is an 8% slope on the entire project. I have D in front of me. 5.99.3D is being added. There's no change to C. So C is as drafted, and the amendment proposed is 5.99.3D, no more than 8% slope on the entire project. This includes the solar panels, shade areas, and setbacks. I can also open it up to 5.99.3E screening, which is a huge amount of information that was added. So I will now open the floor for any discussion on either D or E, which are two new additions. Over here, and then there.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. I just have a point of order. What about the amendment that this lady put forward? What happened to that?
We have to dispose of the amendments, the first amendments, and then we can add a second amendment. So if she wants to, if all these amendments pass, then we will entertain the next amendment.
Okay, they all did pass, correct? Jay's passed?
No. So far, we've only passed, we've passed A, B, and now we're talking about D and E.
Okay, so if all those passes, you'll go back to hers?
Then we go to her amendment, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So over here.
Thank you, Madam Honore, Greg Leonard, 168 Bachelor Street. On 5.99.3E, I thoroughly endorse the concept of screening and the plantings that would obstruct the view of these solar panels, but I have no idea how you plan to enforce that.
Your bylaws that you passed tonight would enforce them. Once it becomes a bylaw, it's a product of the town and put into your bylaws. Then the zoning enforcement officer would enforce what you people have voted on. Just like any other bylaw that you have, it's enforced.
Thank you, Jay. I do know a bylaw is being ignored.
Okay.
Secondarily, I don't know what recourse my zoning enforcement officer has, should five years down the road, or after a solar panel system gets hooked up to the grid, what recourse the town of Granby has to have the developer put in the screening and foliage that they're required to do by bylaws.
If you're asking about pre-existing systems, they are as they are, that you can do nothing about it. They're considered, if you pass this bylaw, they would be considered pre-existing nonconformances. These bylaws are only for things that move forward, that are new, that the planning board has yet to receive to address. Okay, Greg, maybe I missed that again.
Thank you, Jay. Our solar pilot agreement on East Street calls for foliage to be planted and in place right now, which is not in place.
Yes, you're correct.
Jay, are you answering that? One second, please.
Mr. Leonard, as you can see, there's a picture of what you just talked about. Those, from what I understand, meet our current bylaws. That's why we're in here tonight, trying to make more specific bylaws, so this doesn't happen in the future. That's what all the bylaws that we're proposing will eliminate. Just like when we put forward, and I don't remember what we did and what we didn't do. I remember reading it originally, that we're putting four season trees in, they've got to be a certain height, we're going to protect the greenhouse gases, any trees they cut down, what a waste of over 10 inches or more has to be replaced. I remember reading that originally when we did it. That's the purpose of all these bylaws, is so when you drive around Granby, you won't be seeing what you're seeing on that slide today. You're going to see Granby as Granby is elsewhere without solar.
Go ahead.
Hi, Jeanette DeRozier, 32 Baggs Hill Road. I would just like a clarification of a grammatical thing. Okay, so 5.99.3E.4. Mature height after a minimum of five years shall be the height of the fence. Do you mean that it is supposed to be the minimum height of the fence, or it is to be trimmed to remain the height of the fence? That's unclear.
It's going to be at least the height of the fence, because if you look at the other paragraphs, it says the fence has to be as high as the structure itself, so you won't be able to see it. That's the whole purpose. You will be screened from it, and you will not see the solar arrays.
Well, just from a grammatical standpoint, shouldn't it say then, it shall be at least the height of the fence?
But I think, you see right here in E2? And then this is to be the height of the fence. If you look at 5.99.3E.2, it says fences shall be equal to the top of the highest solar device that may be viewed surrounding the entire solar system from a butter's in a
public way. So the fence has to be as high as the highest object.
But she's saying, do you need to trim the tree down to the fence, the size of the tree?
The tree has to be as high as the fence or higher.
So the way?
If you want, at least, I have no, but that was the intention, so you wouldn't be able to see it.
Okay, so we're going to put at least here?
Yeah, not a problem.
We will add at least to the amendment to clarify it. Yes?
Crystal Dufresne, 11 Taylor Street. I just really don't understand, is this a state requirement to have the screening around the solar panels?
To have what around the total panels?
To have the screening or the fencing around the solar panels, is this a state requirement?
The fence is a state requirement for safety reasons. The trees and the screening is not a state requirement. The state calls that home rule, so the 351 cities and towns in the state can decide what they want to do with their own municipality as far as screening. But the fence is a requirement for safety reasons.
All right, so the trees are just to reduce the GHG production process, correct?
Actually, the trees will serve two purposes. One, you will not be able to see the solar arrays as in a butter or from a public way. And the second part is, the trees will taken the excess carbon in the air, and it'll convert it to oxygen, because that's what trees do.
Yes.
I know you, you're a Kevin.
So the other question I have as far as the trees go, how can you be sure that after you plant them, they're going to grow? Because if there's a drought, they're not going to grow. And then are you going to find people if the trees do not go to the length of the fence? I just feel like we're micromanaging people. This is my property. You're already telling me I can only use this section of it. And now you're telling me I have to now plant trees around everything? Because other people don't want to look at my property. I just think we're micromanaging a little too much.
All right, I see no more hands going up. So in order for the amendments on the slope, the 8% slope, which is 3D, and all the screening amendments, which is the addition of 3E, they must pass by a majority to be put on the motion. So all those in favor of the amendments to D and E, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? So the amendment's passed by a majority. So now we have amended the main motion. All the...
F and G. F and G is the habitat for the...
Oh, sorry. I have 20 pieces of paper up here. So now we will discuss F and G, the addition of the mitigation for loss of forest habitat, and the mitigation for disruptive of existing trail networks. Are there any questions on that? We can't hear you.
I'm just saying, I had a bear, and I never had a bear on my street before.
All right, in order for these two amendments to pass, or this section of the amendments to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? So the amendment's passed by a majority. So now I will bring discussion back to the motion as amended. And before I open the floor up to that, I will ask LeAnn if you still intend on amending the amendment now. So can I have a second?
Everything's passed that you've put forth so far.
So on the floor right now, we will be discussing the amendment which changes... So LeAnn, to get this legally correct, I need to make sure that you are requesting this. I think that's like the easiest way to get it done. Add a bullet to the setbacks that we just approved, that says a minimum of 200 feet from a dwelling, front, rear, inside. As opposed to a residence, there's a difference in the definition. I will tell you what a dwelling is, and if this is what your intention is, we will talk about it as a dwelling. A dwelling, as defined in our bylaws, is a building occupied as a residence by one or two families. Is that your intention? Because the definition of a residence is different. Well, there's 12 different types of residences.
Okay, that's fine then.
So your amendment is to add to the setbacks a bullet point which reads a minimum of 200 feet from a dwelling, front, rear, and side. So I have a second, so I will now open the floor to the addition of a bullet to 5.99.3B added to the setbacks. That says a distance requirement of a minimum of 200 feet from a dwelling, front, rear, and side. Sides. Yep. All right, so we'll start over here.
George Knight, 63 Kendall. The rear of my house to my rear property is approximately 90 feet. Now how far from there would the fence be for a solar array? If it's 110 feet, that's way too close.
Can you say your question again?
From the rear of my house to my rear property line is approximately 90 feet. How far would the fence be for the solar array from my rear property line?
According to that amendment? That's being proposed?
Yes, this is part of the amendment, yeah.
It's being proposed, it's 200 feet from the dwelling. So if you're, it'd be if...
It's got to be more than that. It's got to be 200 feet from the property line, not the dwelling.
I'm just speaking to what the question was, what is being...
I'm saying, if you've got 200 feet behind your house to your property line, they can put the solar array right on your property line. to your property line, they can put the solar array right on your property line.
Rich?
Rich Demorecki, Bachelory Street. I would beg this lady to change her amendment to make it from the property line. Every bylaw from the planning board goes to the property line. The residents would have more of a distance than what you're stating. So, if she doesn't change it, I'd like to amend this article to say from the property line, not from a dwelling.
I will ask the lady who's proposing the amendment if she would like to change it, and then we don't have to go through the legality of amending the amendment. So, the amendment on the floor right now says, "A minimum of 200 feet from a dwelling..." What'd you want? So, if you don't have time...
In the sake of time, and as I see people exiting, I would recommend that we, at this time, just vote this amendment down and give the... If he wants to come back up, as I talked about earlier, that this is something that can be, you know, looked at again, be brought up at another town meeting as a bylaw. I think a lot of things need to be looked at as far as getting to 200 feet, and people out here saying dwelling, property line. We need to make sure that we get the information correct, because this is something that goes to our town council, then to Attorney General, and to be approved or denied. So, I think when we're talking about this, we need to make sure that our information and our verbiage that we're putting down is correct. So, when it does go to the Attorney General, they pass it and send it back to us. Because if we put something that's not technically legal, and it goes to Attorney General, they look at it, they can say no, and kick it back to us. Now, we go back to our original bylaw at that point, and we start all over again. So, that's just something to think about at this point.
Go ahead. Can you wait for the microphone, please? Brian, can you wait for the microphone, please?
He thinks about postponing this. Did you not hear me? Would you ask the town administrator what he thinks about postponing this?
Postponing... Because apparently it matters.
In all fairness to Chris that put him on the spot, this is a town issue. We're the town voters, and I think we need to decide it.
With the amount of changes that I see occurring here, I really believe it should be remanded back to the planning board for future further discussion between the planning board and the Energy Commission, and come back with something that the elected board and the appointed committee can agree upon.
So, with that being said, we still have to vote on the Second Amendment that was proposed. So, do we have any further questions on the amendment which now reads, "A minimum of 200 feet from the property line"? This woman right here?
I just want to clarify, as far as a property line, we don't own the land behind our property line. We own to our property line. So, to tell us that we have to go 200 feet past our property line, we no longer own that land. So, we're putting it on state land, but we're reaping the benefits. Just, again, how can we put solar panels for ourselves to make money if we own that property, if we're going beyond our property line? The wording is wrong.
Rich?
Rich Demorecki. Can we have what Jay's opinion is on this? You know, since he amended part of this before?
He's coming.
The main purpose of the group that I was with when we did it was not to allow anybody to come into our town and use the bylaws against us, such as 100 feet times 150, which is 15,000 square feet, which you couldn't build a home. So, that's why we pushed it off from 100-foot setback to 200-foot setback from the street. That would give you your 40,000-square-foot distance. And if you look at the slide I have up there, say I owned the 40,000-square-foot frontage on that slide. If there was a solar farm behind me, they'd have to put up 50 feet of screening of trees. So, I couldn't see it, then they could build this solar farm, because I'd never be able to see it. I'm in favor of the one I did. I'm lost with the rest, to be honest with you. I mean, I got nothing against them.
Hey, I just want to clarify something Jay said, too. There's not people that can come out of our town and start doing what they want to do in our town. People, remember that when someone's coming from out of town and want to do something in our town, as far as... They need to buy someone's property. They need to lease someone's property. Someone who owns that property, that owns the property in town, they will say yes or no what someone does with their property, as far as that's concerned. Doesn't mean someone from out of town can come in and start doing whatever they please. It's someone who owns property in town that gives that permission, as far as saying, they'll sell the property to someone, or they'll lease the property to someone.
Right here, this man in the middle. Right here, stand up, sir. No, no, right here. She's coming with the microphone.
Eric Weasel, 50 Kendall Street. To me, this is one of the key reasons why we voted for the moratorium. And to end up with a 50-foot setback from a property line is a waste of the moratorium, to be honest. I mean, if your house is 50 feet from your property line, you have a solar field 50 feet from that, you're talking less than 30, 40 yards on a football. It's just not enough. You know, to rely on the planning board, we've relied on the planning board for this for the last eight, nine months, and this is where we're at. So, I think we need to make something significant happen tonight.
So, I see we have a person in the back who's a non-resident that would like to speak. So, I need the permission of town meeting to allow him to speak. So, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Go ahead and speak.
Hi, everybody. My name is Giles DeWitt. I live in Conway, but I grew up here in town, and we have a farm on Easton Street. You're talking 200 feet from everybody's boundary. How much land is that going to take to put in a 15-acre array? Or does that come out of the 15-acre array? Do you understand what I'm saying? If we can only have a minimum of 15 acres, and now you're taking 200 feet from everybody, how much land is that going to actually incorporate? I know when I was logging, we had to stay away from Vernal Pools. And Vernal Pools had spotted lizards. And in one spot, it was an old ice pond, just for reference. This ice pond was the size of two pickup trucks. Had a spotted lizard in it. It was 450 feet from the water. All the way around, you couldn't touch a tree in. That took up 14 acres. Just so you get an idea of what you're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you. I'm just going to respond because Jay brought it up, and he was talking about, and you were talking about legal. I'm just wondering whether it is legally defensible to reserve land for future development by building lots. So, if you're a landowner and you wish to develop for solar, I'm understanding that the reasoning for the setback, as it was laid out, was to reserve space for a building lot at the front of a piece of land. That suggests that the landowner who owns that land is forced into a situation, if they wish to develop solar, to leave that front land fallow, or to sell it to somebody else, with no real option in between. And I'd say the same thing for the 200 feet on either side of the solar, while we're at it. In terms of the fact that you're trying to make this solar field invisible, it seems that you're requiring both setbacks and screenings. And if you're going to make the screenings as tough as you're making them, it would suggest that the setbacks are less necessary. In terms of protecting the landowner's ability, I think the term is to hold and to quietly enjoy their piece of land without infringing on another property. I think that this may be going too far.
We had a comment over here.
Daphne Camanitas, East Street, Granby. I have a question. How many solar farms do we have in Granby now? And how many are proposed to come in within the next year?
Okay, I'm going to answer that two ways. Kursarge has five solar locations. But when they were created, they were created as one solar farm. Under today's rules, they would be considered five, because the property has to abut each other per project. Since those properties are on both sides of the street, they don't abut anything. But when they were created, they were one solar project. But today's definition, Kursarge, is five. The Dickinsons would make six.
To answer your question, when they were approved, there's two. There's Dickerson and the one on East Street. There's two in this town.
I thought you said there's one on Porter.
All right, thank you.
And is there going to be a ceiling on that? Is there like, we're not going to have any more than 2,500 solar farms in Granby? I mean, where's it in? And what are the bylaws that these people went by? And are those going to change when these change, these bylaws change?
The number of solar farms for the future would be determined by the existing landowners. We are just giving them stipulations that we really don't want to look at them. We want to keep Granby looking like Granby. We want to let the landowners make money on their land. There's no limit on the number of solar farms. And we want the town to be able to earn some revenue for the departments to support the residents and the departments. But there's no limit. The landowners, as long as they meet the bylaws, can build solar farms.
And that answer to the second part of your question?
As far as how many can be built, there's no cap, there's no limit. But when we set bylaws, we set guidelines that protect where they can be built and how they can be built, and the size they can be built. I want people, we're putting a lot of time and effort into this, and I want people to remember that anything under 250 kilowatts can be built by right anywhere in town. Your neighbor can put in a 240-kilowatt solar field next to your house by right.
Are there any more questions on the amendment that's on the floor right now?
Excuse me, this is John Labera. The question was asked, if you wanted to put in a 15-acre solar farm, how much property would you need? If it were a square piece of property, and you had to keep 200 feet from all the other property lines, it would take about, in the neighborhood, of 30 acres of land in order to put up a 15-acre solar farm.
With the 200-foot setback from all adjacent property lines?
So, I'm going to put to vote the amendment that's on the floor, which must pass up by a majority. The amendment, again, is adding a bullet point to 5.99.3B that says, "A minimum of 200 feet from the property line." So, all those in favor of adding that, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? All right, I'm going to get a count. Please put your cards down. The counters come out. All those in favor of adding the bullet point? All those in favor of adding the bullet point, in favor of the amendment, please raise your Thank you. You can put your cards down. The amendment did not pass. So now, we are going back to the motion as amended. The original emotion, and then the amendments that were put forth by Jay. That all passed. Are there any questions on the motion as amended? Really?
In Jay's motion, he presented setbacks will be as follows. A minimum of 200 feet from the road, a minimum of 40 feet from a frontage, and a minimum of 50 feet from sides and back. What I'm asking is that, on the third part, it says minimum of 50 feet from sides and back, I would ask that we put, that's what I'm looking for now, she's lost my train of thought.
You're asking for an amendment.
Right. I want to amend that piece there to state property line. Sorry about that. It's going to be a long night. So the minimum of 50 feet on sides and back, I'm asking that we add on property line to that, because at this current time, it's very vague, and that doesn't lead, it leaves up to so much interpretation when it comes to someone in front of the planning board.
I need it in writing. So we will now stop debate on the motion as amended, because we have another amendment being proposed. The amendment is on the screen, which is adding to the third bullet of 5.99.3B, which simply adds the words "from the property line." So it'll say minimum of 50 feet on sides and back from property line. Is that what it says? I can't see it. I'm speculating that's what it says. Any discussion on that? In order for that amendment to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? So the amendment passes by a majority. So now, we go back to the main motion as amended, as amended. Is there any questions? Yes, Mr. Randall. The microphone's coming.
Thank you, George Randall. My question would be, does Mr. Sexton feel, still feel that this article should go back to committee for further study?
Mr. Randall, at this point, we've kind of moved forward on several of the amendments already. And speaking to the next one that Mr. Joyce is presenting, that just kind of clarifies some of the things that the planning board is actually talking about, when it comes to inspections, and so on and so forth, in regards to that piece there. So it just gives technical terms, as far as who would be doing the inspections, but it also leaves the planning board the ability to call on other firms or people that do inspections, that we feel that are relevant to approving the solar farm, as well as the upkeep of it, as described.
Okay. In order to vote on the motion as amended, it needs to pass by a two-thirds majority. So I'm going to call the counters. All those in favor of the motion as amended under Article II, please raise your cards. Okay, thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article III.
Bear with me for a minute. We've gathered a lot of different paperwork up here over the past hour. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume Three, Chapter 21, Zoning Bylaws, Section Five, Special Use Regulations, Performance and Standards, Section 5.99, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Insolations, by amending Section 5.99.11, Monitoring and Maintenance by Adding the Subsection Inspections as Detailed in a Planning Board's Report to Town Meeting on October 4th, 2019.
Second? Is there any discussion or questions? Mr. Joyce?
I can do it. This article is very easy. I'm going to explain it like this. When we buy a house, we sign a mortgage paper, we sign insurance papers, we signed everything under the sun. This is no difference. If you look at what we're doing, the planning board put a generic, "you shall do inspections." They didn't say what kind. They didn't say what kind of reports. They didn't say what frequency are the reports. That's all we're doing here. These are the standard reports from a solar farm. Example, on one of our existing solar farms.
Jay, before you discuss the amendment, you have to tell what the amendment is.
Oh. What the amendment is, is to delete the inspections portion. The board shall require periodic inspections of the solar photovoltaic installations after construction and operation, monitoring projects to ensure compliance with the terms of the permit approval and related with plan. The required inspections must occur three years after the certification of completion, and every five years after. We're asking that to be deleted and add...
And add Section 5.99.11B in our reporting requirements, as shown up on the screen, which, in the interest of time, are not going to read. But they're up on the screen, and you have a piece of paper in your handouts. So now, have a second to these amendments? And now you can continue discussing your amendments.
As I stated, all of this is taking the generic writing that's there, and putting in specifics, which are standard with all solar farms. An example that we can give you here in town, all the solar farms are required to put up a bond. It's a bond that if the solar companies, which are usually limited liability corporations, LLCs, were to go away, the town would have a bond to decommission and the solar farm, and bring it back to its natural state. What happened at one of our solar farms in town, they stopped paying the bond. The only way we found out about it was the person that was receiving the money for the bond called and told the town. Otherwise, we would never have known. They stopped paying the bond. This way, we're going to get a yearly report of what's going on out there, to make sure everything is the way it should be for you people.
Just what Jay is saying, when the planning board approves something based on a special permit, they will attach restrictions, guidelines. That's the point of a special permit. Some of this here, that the planning board has proposed, is something we like to see. I know what Jay had put in a couple of things, too. Those are also things that I think the planning board would be okay with. But again, the planning board sets what they feel at the time of the special permit. What Jay was referring to as someone who stopped paying on their bond, well, that could happen regardless of what's in place. And then the town needs to take action on that. So that, even though we had to have inspections, they could still, that still could happen. It's not going to stop that from happening. And if it does happen, the town needs to take action, because that is part of the special permit, that they're required to have a bond in place for that. So the town can turn around and take action, as far as, as that is concerned, as far as a legal piece.
So does the planning board agree with amendments or not?
The planning board will agree with the amendments that are proposed by Mr. Joyce.
Any further questions or discussion on the amendments? In order for the amendment to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? So the amendment passes unanimously. So now, we will resume discussion of the motion as amended. Is there any questions or discussions on the motion as amended under Article III? All right, all those, in order for this to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. Do you have it? The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article IV.
Yeah, thank you. Folks, just before I read this amendment, I just really want to make a brief comment. When certain boards or committees have public hearings, to have public input, I would encourage everybody, if you can, to show up to those hearings. A lot of this stuff is where we get the input from the town folks, if you will. It helps us draft, whether it's the planning board or another committee, it helps that particular board or committee draft things that they're bringing to the town. I can speak to the public hearing that we had on this, and I think there was 12 people there. And I want to thank the 12 people that were there that night. But again, a lot of these things could have came up during those public hearings, and taken consideration, a lot of thoughts, and stuff like that. That's what a lot of those are for, so. Article IV. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume Three, Chapter 21, Zoning Bylaws, Section Five, Special Use Regulations and Performance Standards, Section 5.99- Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Insolations for Housekeeping and Consistency Purposes, by deleting inapplicable references to subsections, repetitive language, revising typographical errors in subsection references as detailed in the Planning Board's Report for the Town dated October 4th, 2019.
Thank you. Second? Jay, do you have an amendment to this one? All right, so I'm opening the floor up for discussion.
I have Article Four, if I have the experience available.
Great. Any questions or comments? All right, in order for the motion under Article Four to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article Four passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Joyce to present the motion under Article Five.
I think I should have a cheer here. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the select board to continue with the waterline construction project from South Hadley, down Route 202 to Amherst Street, and Pleasant Street to Morgan Street.
Thank you. Second? Any questions or discussions?
I'm sorry to lengthen the town meeting, but I thought that at a previous town meeting, we had already voted to bring the waterline from Morgan down to Five Corners, and the line from Five Corners was going to go up to, I think, Fins Hill. I could be wrong in that, but I would hope that the other voters would want an explanation of what happened and why.
And George, that's why I'm here tonight. Some things have changed, and we want to keep you fully advised. When I talked to you last January, we said that we were going to do the waterline starting in 2020, ending in 2021. That would come from the South Hadley line, down to approximately Amherst Street, Fins Hill area. Then we'd also be doing the School Street intersection. Mass DOT has changed the schedule. We do not have any control over Mass DOT's schedule. In fact, to a degree, we don't even have control over South Hadley's requirements to get their 100,000 gallons of water per day. What is going to happen in 2020, Mass DOT will be building the portion of Route 202, finishing off in South Hadley, and then entering Granby at the town line. And they will do the roadwork to 54 West State Street. 54 West State Street, we will install the water pipeline. But as I said, when I stood before you in January, I said we'd be doing it '20 to '21 for the entire thing. Mass DOT changed the schedule. They're not coming back to do Five Corners or School Street until 2023. So we're only going to be doing as far as 54 West State Street now, because we are dependent, not only on Mass DOT's schedule, but we're dependent on their money, too, because we can't afford it ourselves.
Any further question? Mr. Nally?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Madam Moderator, I'm asking a question.
Madam Moderator, I'm asking a question. I may have a follow-up question.
Sure.
Can you please tell us whether or not there has been an agreement to furnish water from South Hadley Water District yet?
South Hadley Water District Number One has changed a couple of the requirements. One of the thing is, we were doing a direct drilling under the Stony Brook, which is located by the apartment complex in Pizza Palace. Well, they want it above ground. So right now, the drawings are being changed to show that the water pipe that goes over the Stony Brook Bridge down there will not go underground, it'll go above ground. In addition to that, South Hadley wants to ensure that everyone on that pipeline connects to the pipeline. Those are South Hadley's conditions. Wherever the pipeline goes, you will connect. And at the South, the Stony Brook Bridge, excuse me, they are requiring us to go above ground now. So that is the difference between then and before, the differences of South Hadley and the difference of Mass DOT, and we are not asking you for any more money. The money we have will cover it.
Do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you. That was one of my follow-up questions, but he didn't answer the actual question. Do we have water to fill the pipe?
Sorry, Steve. South Hadley has verbally told us they will give us 100,000 gallons of water per day, which will suffice for Phase One and Phase Two. Until the drawings are redone, re-approved by them, they will not give us anything in writing. And we're waiting for Chapo Engineering to finish the drawings, so we can submit a grant, and it has to be in Boston by 2:00 PM on 20 November. So we're just waiting on the drawings to come back, to go to South Hadley, because they won't sign anything until they approve the latest set of drawings.
John Mitchell, 151 Cava Street. Question I have is getting water from, getting water from District One, is there any potential that we're going to run into an issue like we have currently with District Two with the water we're getting for 116 Route? Are we going to deal with potentially being taxed along that route?
John, no. On Fire District One, we made it crystal clear. For people who don't know it, our people that live in Granby over on 116, they get their water from South Hadley Water District Two, are taxed from South Hadley and they're taxed from Granby. We told Fire District Number One, don't pour it on us again. We are not paying additional tax on the water coming from Fire District One.
So just quickly, as Jay said, last January, the town had voted and approved for us to look at bringing water up 202. I believe at that time it was up to Fins Hill.
Yes.
Okay. So at this point, those plans have changed. So that's what we're asking the town right now, is that do you wish for us to continue to pursue this? It's no longer going to Fins Hill, it's going to, what number, West Street?
It's going to go 54 West State Street, then pick up again.
Right, so 54 West State Street, which is approximately Little Italy Pizzeria. That's how far we've come up. There is no commitment from the town of South Hadley in writing to us. Also something that needs to be, that wasn't part of the original plan that came forward, is that the town of South Hadley is going to require each business along that route to hook up to their water. When this first came up back in January, that was considered to be an option. The town of South Hadley is telling us now, it is no longer an option. They will be required to do that. So each business, or home, or resident, wherever it may be there in that section of 202, will be required to hook up to that water. And that could be anywhere between $3,000 to $5,000 per hookup. And then there's additional costs that go along with that as well. So these are some things that are different from the original plan that was brought forward in January. They definitely have reduced the amount of water and how far we'll be going into town.
Go ahead.
Who is going to pay for that hookup?
Name, can I have your name and?
Oh, Wendell Love, 21 Taylor Street. Who is going to pay for it? Because I have a dead husband, have gotten this property, I don't have $5,000 to pay for a hookup.
The property owners that are on from 54 West State Street will be required to pay the hookup. And South Hadley has told us, it's approximately $2,000, plus you have to decommission your well, for the simple reason is, the state and South Hadley will not require a cross connection between a well and South Hadley One District water because of contamination. The property owner, that's what I said, and then I told them the price they gave us.
Go ahead.
Steve Shinaki, Taylor Street, 28. Does anybody have a grip on how much this is going to cost the town and the residents of this town? I mean, it, I mean, it really, we're talking millions and millions and millions. And I think it's, you know, I think we need to scrap it. That's how I'm looking at it.
I urge you not to scrap it at this time. Water is essential for the businesses there downtown, Steve. I, I think if you talk to some of the businesses there, even town itself, we've, I'm not talking about private residences now, I'm talking about the businesses. The, we're not even going, we're not going that far enough. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But I urge you to reconsider, because the town has had problems with contamination in the wells, we've had to re-chlorinate the wells many times. Anybody that's on a public drinking water source, the restaurants, all have the same problems. If, if any contamination gets into their well, they're out of business. And we have so few businesses in town, most of the businesses are going to gladly tie in to domestic water. Even, I've talked with the Mass West people, they were so interested in getting water, they would have assisted us in, in funding some of it. That's how important it is to some of those, because it's fire protection and it's domestic water for the businesses.
If you look what I put up on the screen, that's a copy of our grant application that was for 2020 through 2021, for the construction and the documentation and the drawings for Phase One, the documentation for Phase Two, and the documentation for Phase Three, comes to $2.6 million and change. The state was going to give us over $1.9 million in a grant. Under the MVP grant, we are allowed up to 75%. So that left our town for that entire project to pay $700,000. The lieutenant governor we spoke with is called in-kind funds. In other words, duplication of effort. Since the state is paying to do the asphalt, they're paying for the police details, they're paying for the surveying, they're paying for the soil samples, they're paying for all that, so we don't have them. Those are in-kind funds. So you take our commitment or our requirement of $700,000 and subtract $560,000 from it. If this went through last year for the entire project, we would have paid $140,543.40. We are putting in another grant as of 2:00 PM on 20 November, again. Up to Governor Baker, what he wants to do, but I can tell you right now, it's called a non-participating contract or non-participating partner with Mass DOT. If we don't get the grants again, we don't get the in-kind funds, we don't get anything, we don't like the price, we just walk away and say, have a nice day, and doesn't cost us a penny. So right now, we're doing the drawings, we're selling these requirements, re-submitting them, and then we'll wait and see what we get. But we can walk away with nothing, paying nothing, if we so desire.
I would just at this time recommend that we get a commitment from the town of South Hadley. I've sat at some of their meetings, I've heard different information come out of there and to what they're willing to, to give us. Also, they're saying they can provide us with 100,000 gallons of water a day. I don't, I don't, I don't know, I think more work needs to be done to see how much water would be consumed for that one particular area. Because after 100,000 gallons, they're not going to give any more water, because they can't. They don't have the supply to do so. So it's a limitation for us. So I would ask that, the board right now, Selectman has the $1.2 million to look at what was approved last year. And the, and the town gave the board the power to spend the money as they see needed going along with this project. My concern is that, I, I understand what, how important the water is for this town, without a doubt, but I also like to know exactly, is that we have a commitment from the town of South Hadley in writing, so we knew, we know moving forward, we start spending money, it's real money that we're spending, it's not just going by the wayside for nothing. And also to make sure that 100,000 gallons will provide the people with the necessary water for that area. Because if it doesn't, then there's no need for us to go any further. If they can't, if we can't get the water that is required, then there's no need to, because South Hadley has stated they will not give us any more water than 100,000 gallons
In order for this motion, do you have a question?
Glenn, you brought up some really good points. The comment that I'd like to make is that there are some residences along there that are set way back at the hearing or forum that was at last week. The figure that was thrown forward at the time was $2,000 to tie into the South Hadley water. I hear it tonight at $3,000 to $5,000. I suggest that it could be double that.
Seeing no further hands up, I will call for a vote for the motion under Article Five. Must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. DeRozer to present the motion under Article Six.
I move the town vote to transfer from account number 01-192-5801-Art. From Annual Town Meeting 061614, number 21, paving the senior center, the sum of $6,300 for the purpose of funding pavement repairs at the new library.
Thank you, John Libera, for the Finance Committee. It's our obligation under the bylaws to make a recommendation on all articles for which there are expenditures, but we're going to do it all at one time. For the rest of these articles, the Finance Committee has looked at these, and we would recommend that you vote for them.
Any questions or discussion, comments? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calling Mr. DeRozer to present the motion under Article Seven.
I move the town vote to transfer from the General Purpose Stabilization Fund the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of funding tree removal along public ways.
Second, and any discussion?
Basically, we were hard hit with gypsy moss a couple of years ago. We have currently 388 documented dead trees, many of them over power lines. This is nowhere near enough money to take all of those, but we are also applying for a grant and trying to push the state, to push National Grid to start taking some of these trees down, which they have been giving us a lot of hard time for. So this is just a start. We're not the only town doing this. Belcher Town, I believe, is doing it tonight. Hamden is having a town meeting vote, also asking for $100,000.
Mr. Mitchell?
John Mitchell, 151 Cava. Just a point of reference in support of this article, the fire department has seen a significant increase in responses due to trees being down, trees being against wires, tree fires and such. So I personally support this article as a matter of public safety.
In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Joyce to present the motion under Article Eight.
I promise you, this is the last time you see me up here tonight. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the Capital Need Stabilization Fund the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of funding the purchase and installation of EV chargers for municipal buildings.
Second and discussion.
We have put in for grants, just like the grant on the water pipeline, the all reimbursable grants. Like the water pipeline, we asked you for the 1.2 million to the permission to borrow. You can see what the state gave us, so we didn't borrow. This is the same thing. We have a mandate at the safety complex. What it is, is because we're a green community, when the police vehicles become commercially available as hybrids, we must purchase them, just like we already have on the regular cars, like what the building inspector used. They're hybrids. Well, when they're hybrids, they require a charging station. What we're going to do is put four charging stations at the safety complex for their six vehicles. On Mass DEP is offering us now 60% reimbursement on equipment. We're going to put another two charging stations at the new library. Mass DOER is offering us 80% for equipment and installation. When they start offering this money, it's ours, but we have to pay for it upfront, because they will not reimburse us until all the tasks are complete.
Go ahead.
Hi, Linda Unwin, 53 Center Street. How many electric vehicles do we have?
We have two EV chargers currently at the senior center. We have four more at the school. The two at the senior- The two at the senior center are considered workplace chargers. What that means, they run off an RFID card, which for town use, town employees. The four at the school run off a MasterCard and Visa. If they want to charge their vehicles there, they have to put the MasterCard and Visa. It's a dollar per hour to charge a vehicle. The ones going in at the safety complex will be workplace chargers because they'll be for the police vehicles. And I think if you talk to Chief Wishart or even Chief Mitchell, they don't want the public around where those charges are when they got to respond on calls. So there'll be workplace charges for the town only. The two that will be installed at the new library will again be for the public, and they will be MasterCard and Visa at a dollar per hour.
But if we don't have the vehicles, why are we going to get the chargers first?
We have one vehicle at the senior center, and it's used to charge it. There's no guarantee they're going to offer this EV charging money next year. We know because of the green community requirements, we're going to have to start buying hybrid cards for the safety complex and the police department. Our choice is, it's called the Volkswagen settlement money. I don't know if you've heard of Volkswagen. The state is distributing the money how they see fit, and they're going with these EV chargers. So if we want our share of the money, we got to put in for it. If you'd rather not vote on it now and pay 100% later, it's entirely up to you.
All right. In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. The moderator now calls on Mr. Berry to present the motion under Article Nine.
Good evening. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the General Purpose Stabilization Fund the sum of $75,000, the purpose of funding consulting services for the dredging of the Dufresne Park Pond.
Second, and discussion.
If anyone has any technical questions, we have a representative here from GHZA, which is a consulting firm in Springfield. If you'd like to hear from him, I'd ask Madam Moderator to call for a vote to recognize him and allow him to speak.
So in order to have a non-member speak, I need the majority. Can I have all those in favor? Thank you. So we have a majority. So do you have a question? Oh, you just wanted to get him. Okay. Does anybody have a question for our expert? He can do that, sure. Come on up.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you all for having me here. My name's Nat Arri. I'm a professional engineer with GHZA, Geo-Environmental. We're a pretty large company in the Northeast and Midwest. But I come from the Springfield office, and we were a local company in East Long Meadow. And we have about 40 years of experience of doing inland pond, lake and pond dredging, freshwater dredging. What we've been talking with Lou about, Mr. Berry, about is about doing a study to get you to a point where you can make decisions whether you want to go all the way and do this. Because it is a significant time and financial commitment to do lake and pond dredging. There's a fair amount of field work that goes into it, and there's planning, and then there's permitting. Permitting is probably the biggest chunk of it before you get to construction. So what we've recommended is that you fund an initial study, a feasibility study, that would cost somewhere in the order of $35,000 to $45,000. That could, and all the information that is collected through going and doing surveys in the pond, identifying wetland resources, doing some testing, initial testing of the sediments, sampling and testing of the sediments so that you can determine if there are any contaminants in them, that then determines how you can reuse or dispose the material. And then we would put all that information together in a report. We'd outline all the permits that are required and give you a probable cost estimate for going the rest of the way, which would be all the permitting costs to do final design and planning, and then to actually get the project under construction, and then a probable cost, you know, a probable conceptual or preliminary cost budget estimate. That would allow you to determine whether you want to go forward or not with the project. And it may discover, it may uncover something that, you know, that may prevent you from doing it. Then again, it might, it just may, we have the ability to speak with regulators in Boston and in Springfield and here in town to clarify any concerns that they have. And in some cases, they may look at the project favorably, and especially when you're dealing with sediments that can have contaminants in them, they could look at them and say, you know, this is not a significant issue. We're okay with you disposing them in this field over here, or wherever the location may be. So that's really the process. That's what we're, we've recommended that the town start with, and then, and then, you know, proceed. The, I think the budget amount that Mr. Berry is proposing is to complete, after we do the study, to go the rest of the way and get you so that you have a set of plans and permits in hand to then go to construction. So I think that says it.
Does anyone have any questions for him? Thank you. So in order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. The moderator will now ask Mr. Berry to present the motion under Article 10.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer $1,500 from account 30-122-5302-ART STM 082718, number 08, PFA's testing. $8,200 from account 30-171-5802-ART STM 2418, number four, Forge Pond Trees. $2,144.86 from account 30-210-5801-ART ATM 61812, number 19. And $38,155.14 from account 01122-5798-ART STM 51412, number eight, Forge Pond Land Purchase, for a total of $50,000 for the purpose of funding Dufresne's Park repairs.
Second, any questions or discussion? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The moderator now calls in Ms. Silver to present the motion under Article 11.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer $415.50 from account 30-420-5806-ART Annual Town Meeting, May 10, 2010, number 22, light dump truck. $4,048.70 from account 30-420-580, oh, 5807, sorry, ART Annual Town Meeting, 61812, number 21, dump truck. And $2,535.80 from account 30-420-5808-ART Annual Town Meeting, 61812, number 22, mower, for a total of $7,000 for the purpose of funding the purchase of a sander for the public buildings department.
Second, is there any discussion or questions? In order for the motion under Article 11 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now asks for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Second, all those in favor? I'm not asking if anyone's not in favor. Thank you very much.